Called this meeting to order the regular scheduled board meeting for June. It is now six thirty, past six thirty, it is June twenty-fifth. Determination, we have a quorum. Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramirez.
Present.
Ms. Judith Solis.
Present.
Mr. Elsarr Velazquez.
Present.
Diane Garcia and myself is present as well. We do have a quorum, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and us all.
Section three, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Do we have a motion?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum, we do have Ms. Elia Ramos. Subject is revive the fort, revive Fort Ringel. And Ms. Ramos, just for the information, you do have a maximum of five minutes.
Oh, that's more than I had planned.
Alright. Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon. Let me start by saying that I think April was a real important month for revive Fort Ringel. We started out with a workshop in service for teachers between UT, RGV, and revive Fort Ringel. We had over sixty teachers from across the valley coming to learn about Fort Ringel. It was amazing to see how excited they were and walking around Fort Ringel and hearing the history. Of course, later that month, you all dropped the bomb with a pool at the entrance of Fort Ringel. I knew when I was appointed to this committee that it was an advisory committee. And I knew that we were going to face many obstacles, including no budget. So we formed a nonprofit foundation. We have to solicit monetary donations. Some of you donated, and we want to thank you for that. And with the cooperation of Administration for Work Orders. For your information, some of those work orders are three years old and have been resubmitted many times, and they're still unattended to. The committee has obtained some very positive advertisements in local newspapers, and I need remind you that Rick Diaz has come to do programs three times just on Fort Ringel. UT, RGV, again, the alphabet college that I call now, has had very positive feedback. We have partnered with CHAPS, which is their archaeology department, with the Civil War Trail to work on it. In fact, about three weeks ago, some of their members came that represent foundations to ask about or to see the possibility of helping us out. Need I say, the first question they asked is what are they building at the entrance? We have to tell them. So let's get down to the real nitty-gritty. I know the committee was an advisory, or is an advisory committee with no power whatsoever, but we are knowledgeable about the history and the needs and the use of the fort. So when we saw a hole being dug at the entrance, I'll tell you myself, not only was I surprised, I literally cried when I heard what it was. The committee worked hard to clear that area from buses at the very beginning. We had plans for that area. We had planned to put a sculpture like Fort Stockton, the cavalry, maybe a chuck wagon. These plans and others had been voiced to the administration and to the superintendent. So I come to find out that our efforts to bring pride to our citizens were not. I don't have to remind three of you at least, at least, that you swam in another pool in Fort Ringel that is now one big seaman's lab because it was not a feasible location. If one member of our committee had been asked for an opinion, we would have gladly offered alternate sites in the district as well as in the fort. We are not against education, but we are against the location. But it is now too late to remediate this travesty, and as optimistic as I want to stay, I don't see this pool in any way helping our school community year-round. At the core of this action is when officials and administrators speak out of both sides of their mouth, encouraging and supporting yet sabotaging our goals. As a trained history teacher and counselor, I have given it a lot of thought about your actions. Proposing the action for the pool and supporting it, yet when confronted by revive members, you were blameless, clueless, or even worse, no words to support your action. I have condensed it to this: Your egos are bigger than our school goals, and you're much bigger than Fort Ringel. If your legacy is that pool, you will quickly be forgotten. My legacy to students that I've encountered, as well as all the historical signs in Fort Ringel and in town, I dare you to go look to see if my name is on any of them. I'm going to pass out some notes that I made three years ago to this, well, not Mr. Elisa. It's almost a crime that I was so optimistic for Fort Ringel when the board are really the ones that sabotaged the future of Fort Ringel. This is also my official resignation to the Fort Ringel Committee. Thank you very much, and I hope I stayed under five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
My understanding, item one is to be tabled, Mr. Garcia?
The student?
Tabled. And item twenty will be removed as item twenty-one is, covers item twenty. Correct. Item two, considering take possible action on trial request from Rio High School. Rio High School. Do we have a motion, item two?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second, Mr. Ramirez? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, considering take possible action on request from U.S. Customs and Border Protection Department of Homeland Security for a right of entry for survey and site assessment.
Last time the board committee, the Homeland Security had approached us in reference to give them the right of way.
I don't think your mic is on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, when we had our last committee meeting, Homeland Security had approached us to give up the right of entry to come and survey the land here by the river. They're not telling us specifically that it is for the fans, no, but they just need permission to come and survey it, and they want our permission as soon as possible. So we're grant, I'm asking for the permission to allow them to do such a survey.
Do you have a motion, item three?
Mr. Garcia, this is just for the survey and assessment, not to take any other...
I so move. We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, considering take possible action on donations to RGCC ISD.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, board members. Item number four, Rio Grande City CISD intends to issue debt for the renovation of the athletic facilities that include acquiring and installing synthetic turf at the Joe R. Sanchez Stadium, Rio Grande City High School, and Gruya High School football practice fields. Administration is seeking approval for the plan of finance for the issuance of the Rio Grande City CISD Maintenance Tax Note Series 2018.
Item four.
I don't know if I have...
I don't know if we have a...
I think I...
We have item four is considered.
Yeah. Maybe I have the wrong book. Item four was considering take possible action on plan of finance for issuance of Series 2018 Maintenance Tax Note. Do we have a motion, item four?
I guess he's going to present. Dr. De La Santos will present on it, item four.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. President, hours before you on June the fourth, at a meeting that you all had at noon, and the board authorized that we move forward as your financial advisor to seek bids for financing the projects that you're doing in the stadium. And what we did, we did that in the last three, three weeks or so. We took in the bids on Friday, five bids came in on page one, which is after the cover page. You will see the five bids that came in. The low bidder is three point three eight percent by Texas Independent Bankers Bank. It is in Farmers Branch, Texas. They have the best bid, and if the board chooses to go forward with its financing, that is who we recommend that you would select. On the second page, the next page, on the right-hand side is the information that I presented to you on June the fourth. We're predicting about a four point ten percent interest rate. You'll notice that the lowest interest rate was at three point thirty-eight, and of course the highest of the five bids was three point ninety-five. What you end up, if you look at the last column before that bold black line, where it says total, those are the total payments that you will be making for the next fifteen years, or at least the next nine years, about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. We had at the last time said that it would be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you will look at the second column, at the very bottom of the line, what you are borrowing is two million five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then the, next to the left, where it says the interest line, is what you are paying in interest every year. There's a footnote, so if you would be approving the finance, it would be that left section. There's a footnote at the very bottom, the initial rates that were quoted to you was three point nine nine for an eight-year term. You're actually getting a lesser rate for a fifteen-year term. The other thing that I'd like to call your attention to is the very last line at the bottom. Mr. Garcia asked on the June the fourth meeting if we, if we could arrange it so that you could pay off the loan early if you chose to, and if you were able to. So what we did, we put in a nine-year call date. At the end of nine years, you look at this loan, and you feel you're, you want to pay it off, you can pay it off without any penalties whatsoever, which is close to the eight-year note that was being offered to you, except you're paying less, and then you would have a balloon payment if you will. The next page is the Maintenance Tax Notes for 2018, which is you're borrowing two point five sixty. Your cost of issuance is approximately fifty thousand dollars. So what you would be getting, the project fund deposit, is actually two million five hundred and ten thousand dollars. The timetable is what we're following. You should get your funds within about thirty days from today if the board approves. And then the last page is the working group participants, yourselves being the issuers, we being your financial advisor. Mr. Perez is here, your bond counsel. He is ready to address the next two items, which is the legal part. In other words, once you approve, if you approve the plan of finance, you're approving the interest rate and the low bidder. And then you approve the act, the items that he's going to present to you, you would be approving the resolution or the order to move it forward to the Attorney General's Office. And he also has another item to present to you, which is a reimbursement resolution, which if you pass, once you get the monies from this financing, you would be able to reimburse your, your maintenance fund, general fund, for whatever expenditures you might have made already on the project. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any discussion, questions? Do we have a motion, item four?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, considering take possible action on resolution authorizing various actions to prepare for the issuance of the RGCC ISD Maintenance Tax Notes Series 2018 and containing other matters relating thereto.
Item number five, Rio Grande City CISD will issue debt for the renovation of the athletic facilities. Administration is seeking approval of a resolution authorizing various actions to prepare for the issuance of the Rio Grande City CISD Tax Maintenance Tax Note Series 2018 and containing other matters relating thereto. Mr. Perez will be making a presentation.
Mr. Hold on, Mr. Science?
It's, I don't know if it's because of the fans, but it's hard to hear.
It's hard to hear.
Raise the volume.
Mr. Garcia, President, members of the board, again, my name is Rick Perez, and I serve as bond counsel to the school district. As Dr. De La Santos, I go to you guys, you know, they sold your tax notes, you got a low bid, you've accepted that low bid, if you accept it, there's some documents that I've given over to Ms. Broles Mendez that needs to be executed. So if you accept the bid, you execute those documents, and then I'll proceed to do a closing with these documents and proceed with the closing of the transaction.
Any questions, discussion, item five? Do we have a motion, item five?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion, item five, by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, considering take possible action on resolution authorizing the reimbursement of expenditures on certain district improvements to the stadium of the Rio Grande City CISD with Maintenance Notes Series 2018.
Again, Mr. Garcia, this item is basically the district approving a resolution to reimburse themselves with any expenses that they have already incurred or are going to incur before the actual price, the actual sale of these notes. So we close these in thirty days. You get your money in thirty days, but you can start spending money already today or tomorrow. Or if you have in the last month or so, then you can legally get reimbursed back those funds.
Any discussion? We have a motion, item six.
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item seven, considering take possible action on donations to RGCC ISD.
Item number seven, the report for donations received by the school district for the month of May is attached. Total donations are four thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Administration recommends approval of the donations received.
Do we have a motion, item seven?
I so move.
We have a motion, Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, considering take possible action on interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Rio Grande City and Rio Grande City CISD for tax assessment and collections for the term of July thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Item number eight, the interlocal cooperation agreement for the tax assessment and collection with the city of Rio Grande City is attached. This agreement shall be effective from July thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen through July the thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. The city agreed to pay a fee of six percent of all current taxes collected from October first, two thousand and eighteen through September the thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Administration recommends approval of the agreement.
Do we have a motion, item eight?
I so move.
We have a motion, Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, considering take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Region One Education Service Center and Rio Grande City CISD to use school facilities for the purpose of establishing adult education and literacy, literacy program for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
Rio Grande City CISD is requesting permission to enter into an M.O., memorandum of agreement with Region One Education Service Center for the Adult Literacy Program. The program is to establish an adult education and literacy program for eligible participants from July two thousand and eighteen to June two thousand and nineteen. The district will receive twenty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the use of the facility for one year. Administration recommends approval of the memorandum of agreement.
Do we have a motion, item nine?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item ten, considering take possible action on application of Mesteno Wind Power LLC for an appraised value limitation on qualified property. Authorize, authorize the superintendent to review the application for completeness and submit to the comptroller, and authorize the superintendent to enter into any agreement to extend the deadline for board action beyond one hundred and fifty days, subject to board ratification.
Rio Grande City CISD has received the application from Mesteno Wind Power LLC for the appraised value limitation on qualified property. The district will then authorize the superintendent to review the application for completeness and submit it to the state comptroller, and the district will authorize the superintendent also to enter into any agreement to extend the deadline for board action beyond one hundred and fifty days, subject to board ratification. Administration recommends the approval of the resolution.
Do we have a motion, item ten?
I so move.
We have a motion, Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eleven, considering take possible action on retaining consultants to assist the district in processing of application for appraisal value limitation on qualified property from Mesteno Wind Power LLC.
Mesteno Wind Power LLC has submitted an application for appraised value limitation on qualified property for initial review. Administration is seeking approval on retaining Mo Casian Associates Incorporated and O'Hellen Demerath and Castillo PC as consultants to assist the district in processing of such application for the appraised value limitation on qualified property from Mesteno Wind Power LLC. The fee for these services is thirty-seven thousand five hundred for each, which will be paid after letter of completeness is received from the Texas Comptroller's Office and from the application fee received in the amount of seventy-five thousand on June the seventh, two thousand and eighteen from Duke Energy Renewables Incorporated. Administration recommends approval of retaining the consultants assisting the application.
Do we have a motion, item eleven?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twelve, considering take possible action on pay application number seven for the district-wide energy savings and facility improvement program.
Attached you will find the pay application number seven for the district-wide energy savings and facility improvement program. The total for pay application number seven is three hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents as of May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen to E3 Integral Solutions Incorporated. It is recommendation that pay application number seven be approved for payment.
Do we have a motion, item twelve?
I so move.
We have a motion, Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, considering take possible action on external auditor service contract.
The Texas Education Agency requires a financial audit to be performed by an external auditor every year. Noel Garza, CPA PC, has performed the district financial audit for the year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. Noel Garza CPA performed our audit in a very professional manner and works very well with our financial staff. The audit fee will be between thirty-seven thousand and thirty-nine thousand for the audit financial report for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Administration recommends the approval of Noel Garza CPA PC for auditing services.
Do we have a motion, item thirteen?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item fourteen, considering take possible action on renewal of bond for safekeeping of government property, JROTC, Rio Grande City High School, and Rio Grande City CISD, Gruya High School.
A school district is required to provide the U.S. Army a current bond for safekeeping of government property issued to education institutions. This bond provides the government property assigned to the Rio Grande City High School and RGCC ISD Gruya High School is under continuous coverage against all manner of laws in accordance with Army regulations. This, this action also requires appointment of a military property custodian and adoption of a resolution authorizing the superintendent of schools to execute a bond. Administration recommends the approval of the bond.
Do we have a motion, item fourteen?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen, considering take possible action on Transportation Department new guidelines and mileage approval.
The Rio Grande City CISD Transportation Department is updating its general transportation guidelines. Effective August the first, two thousand and eighteen, updates will go into effect for transportation charges contained in the guidelines. The following is a summary of the important changes to those charges. Bus, there will be a fee of three dollars and fifty cents per mile. For a bus, there will be an one hundred and twenty-five dollar base fee for Saturday requests, and there will also be a ninety dollar per day fee for cars or SUVs with unlimited miles. Administration recommends approval of the general transportation guidelines.
Do we have a motion, item fifteen? If, you said ninety, ninety, if they just use it to drive ten, twenty miles here around, it's still ninety dollars?
Yes.
Do we have a motion, item fifteen?
The reason is, excuse me. The reason is that the Transportation Department has been having issues as to departments requesting cars or vehicles for being used here within the district, and they request them, and they just haven't parked, and since right now they're based on a per-mile basis, sometimes those vehicles are not available to the other departments that do request them, do need to use them to travel to Region One.
So if somebody uses it to Dallas, it's still ninety dollars?
Yes, but it's very rare that a car or an SUV is requested to go to Dallas. It's seldom.
If I may, I think there's a little too many questions. Can we just table it to get more specificity?
Sure.
Do you have a...
We move to table?
Yeah, I so move to table.
And I would second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez to table, item fifteen, and Ms. Solis for the second.
Maybe it could go through, through the Finance Committee, and then maybe through another committee where we could all sort of hear it, because I don't remember that at the last one.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor for table, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion, motion to table carries. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion, motion to table carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of May two thousand eighteen.
Presented is a request for approval of tax refunds for May two thousand eighteen. Refunds totaling two hundred dollars and one cent are being requested. Attached is the summary of the refunds. Administration recommends approval of the tax refunds.
Do we have a motion, item sixteen?
So move.
We have a motion, my Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action and requisitions five thousand over in a twelve-month aggregate.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Garcia. We do have requisition starting on page one hundred and eighty-one for your consideration. There is proper funding available for each of these requisitions. I don't know if you have any questions on either of them or any of them?
Just on the Green Law Firm, what is that for?
Oh, I think I asked that, I think it was a settlement for some car accident. I think that's what it was.
It had been pending and we had talked about it in executive, but it barely got paid.
Oh, yeah, it was, the representative, the plaintiff.
Any more questions? Do we have a motion, item seventeen?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on surplus item to be declared obsolete.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every so often, every year, year and a half, all the campuses and other departments, when they have items, computers or food service items or bus tires or whatever is throughout the, the district, when they're not feasible to use anymore, they, we have them picked up and, and we present a list to you to be declared obsolete, so then after they're declared obsolete, then we can have a, an auction after that, and, and the list that we have on pages one eighty-six through two hundred have those items to be, to be declared.
Do we have a discussion? Do we have a motion, item eighteen?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on staff development request for G T teachers.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board Members, Michelle Pedro Garcia, Superintendent and Community Members. T A requires that teachers who teach our service, gifted and talented students or students that are identified as G T, that they seek a total of thirty clock hours and that they complete their modules in order to teach these courses. Rio Grande City C I S D is seeking to, or seeks your approval to contract Region One for this training. The training took place from June the fourth through June the seventh, it was prior to today's board meeting, and the total cost was seven thousand one hundred dollars. There was funding available through two fifty-five staff development, so we were respectfully asking for your approval.
It's already been paid?
It's already been paid. Well, it hasn't been paid, but the services have been rendered.
We have a motion, item nineteen?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're skipping item twenty, going to item twenty-one, consider and take, take possible action on Ice Station Reading Program for the two thousand eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
Good evening, Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools. For the past two years, we've been using Ice Station Reading to screen our students and also to progress monitor our students. This coming school year, however, we want to, you know, include the middle schools. You know, the state requires that all incoming seventh graders that were not successful in the Star Reading be screened, so the cost of the program for two years, and the reason that we want it for two years is because it'll be ten thousand dollars less. Also, the first year, we would be paying the, for the middle school, nine thousand three hundred, the second year, it'll be free. So, so the cost for two years with the middle schools included is a hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. Pending availability of the funds, funding is available through S C E one ninety-nine and Title One to eleven. We respectfully recommend submit for, submit for board approval of the Ice Station Reading Program for elementary and middle schools, and the middle schools.
Any questions, item twenty-one? Do we have a motion on item twenty-one?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action, action on Ready Rosie Parental Engagement Tool for the two thousand eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
Again, Board President, we've been using Ready Rosie as our parental engagement tool. You know, in order to satisfy the high-quality pre-kindergarten program, we need to have something in place, a tool, a parental engagement tool in place. The cost of the program is seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars pending, pending availability of funds. Funding will be available through S C E one ninety-nine. We, we respectfully recommend and submit for board approval, Ready Rosie Parental Engagement Tool.
Any questions, item twenty-two? Do we have a motion, item twenty-two?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on district response to intervention procedural manual for the two thousand eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
If approved, we'll be presenting the R T I procedural manual to all teachers and administrators during the staff development days, which is August fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth. There's no cost to the district, so we respectfully recommend and submit for board approval of the district response to intervention, R T I procedural manual.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-three?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-four, consider and take possible action on the independent contractor agreement between Rob, Roberto Di Huerta, C O M S, and Rio Grande City C I S D to provide orientation and mobility services for the two thousand eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
The Special Education Department is seeking the approval for Roberto Di Huerta. He provides services according to the student's I E P, and he attends A R D meetings as necessary, and he performs and submits evaluations as required to our special ed students. We, their estimated expenses are forty-five thousand dollars. It is a contract, and it's a renewal of his contract, and the funding will be available through I D E A B Fund Two Twenty Four. We respectfully recommend the approval of the contract for Roberto Di Huerta.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-four?
I so move.
We have a motion, my Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-five, consider and take possible action on request to continue with a contract agreement between Texas State Building Services Incorporated and Rio Grande City C I S D for the two thousand eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
Again, the Special Education Department is seeking the approval for extending the Texas State Building Services. It's a contract again for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. The administration fee is six percent for all the T A R's reimbursement checks. The estimated cost for this coming year is sixty thousand dollars. Funding source will be from General Funds One ninety-nine pending availability of funds. We respectfully recommend for your approval, the request for Texas State Building Agreement Contract for the two eighteen, two nineteen school year.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-five?
I so move.
We have a motion, my Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-six, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase computers for campus computer labs.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Garcia, members of the audience. I come before you to ask permission to purchase a thousand three hundred and seventy-nine computers. Normally, we do a three-year lease purchase on refreshing computers at the computer labs. This year, we decided to do it a little bit different. We included Chance to Be Location and the Alternative Center. They never get any computers when we do a lease purchase, and I feel they do have our kids in there, and they do need the technology at those two locations also. We're also refreshing the labs, I mean, the libraries. Each library will receive fifteen additional computers, but except, with the exception of Ringo Middle School and Rio High School because of their population. Ringo Middle School has Early College and Magnum Middle, and of course, the population at Rio High School is twice the size of Gruia. So in total, we're requesting permission to purchase a thousand three hundred and seventy-nine. The specs on the computers were raised a little higher for more shelf life. We doubled the RAM, we went from eight to sixteen. The monitors that we're going to be receiving is what you guys have in front of you. Because these machines are going to be used with Ice Station for reading, the kids will now have a bigger monitor to help them. Normally, we have bought nineteen-inch monitors, but because of online testing, we feel that the twenty-four-inch monitor will suffice even better, will, will help the kids even more. This will be a purchase, not a lease. The, the total amount is nine hundred, a little over nine hundred and twenty-one thousand. Funding is available through I M A, and we request, respectfully request approval of this item. Any questions?
And all these labs will be equipped with a new equipment?
Yes, yes. What happens when we refresh the labs, the computers that are in the labs go to the classrooms, and any obsolete equipment that we have in there, especially monitor, computer monitors that are still old style, are replaced with the computers coming from the labs, and they're all flat screens. So that's what will happen with this refresh.
Any more questions? Do we have a motion, item twenty-six?
So move.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-seven, consider and take possible action on after-school center in education, ACE Summer Adult Welding Class, classes for Gruia Parents, Gruia Community Members by McAllen Career Institute.
The ACE Parental Engagement Component, which is the ACE program through Adrina Villarreal and her staff, are requesting to offer Gruia Parents and the Gruia Community Members an adult welding class with a minimum of eight participants and a maximum of fourteen students. The proposed institution, which is McAllen Careers Institute, will be the ones that will come and teach and certify the Gruia Parents and the Gruia Community Members through the American Welding Society. The classes will be held at the Career Technology Welding Classes at Gruia High School. The starting date is June the fourth and will terminate on July the thirteenth. We respectfully recommend approval. There is funding available through the Career Technology Department. It's twenty-five hundred dollar per Gruia parent, of course, with proof of residency, and they did have to fill out an application, and we respectfully recommend approval for this particular course.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-seven?
Actually, may I have a question? It started on June fourth, do we know how many people are in there already?
Right now, yes. We have currently enrolled twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve, twelve adults.
Sorry, I so move.
We have a motion, my Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, consider and take possible action on Career and Technical Education Summer Classes for Gruia High School Students by R G V Voltec.
Again, in order to prepare our Gruia High School students, again, through the ACE program, we are offering a C T, or the Career Technology Department was offering, for us to offer a C N A certified nurse assistant course from Monday through Thursday from eight to twelve. The student cohort, again, it's approximately fifteen students. Students must complete their C P R certification and their coursework and their clinicals in order to be certified. There is funding available through the C T A one ninety-nine program to pay the contracted services, which would be provided by the R G V tech for Gruia High School students. All classes will be offered at Gruia High School. Again, there are currently, this program started on June the fourth, there are currently fifteen students enrolled. We respectfully request the continuation of the program.
All right. Do we have a motion for item twenty-eight?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, consider and take possible action on after-school centers in education Summer Classes for Gruia Parents, Gruia Community Members by R G V Voltec.
Again, the ACE program is seeking approval to provide the same C N A coursework, but to the parents, the adults in the community for Gruia, the Gruia area. Again, it's a class being offered, but in the afternoon from Monday through Thursday, and again, there is a cohort of up to fifteen students, which are your adults, of course. This class started on June the fourth and will terminate on July the thirteenth. There was pre-screening, and currently, we have ten adults enrolled. The funding is being incurred by the ACE program. We respectfully recommend approval for the continuation of the program at Gruia High School.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-nine?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirty, consider and take possible action on change order number one from Hellas Construction Incorporated for the Rio Grande City C I S D Athletic Facility Renovations Project.
Again, Rio Grande City C I S D Athletic Facility Renovations Project consists of acquiring and installing synthetic turf. The original contract sum for this project is two million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The attached change order consists of providing and installing two-inch PVC conduit and four concrete boxes for technology purposes at the stadium, a re-top surfacing system on the Joe R Sanchez Stadium track, high jump pad and all of the field event runways, design renderings for the synthetic turf to be installed at the Sanchez Stadium, the Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School football practice fields. The net amount for this change order is a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars, making the contract sum for this project two million five hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Administration recommends approval of change order number one.
Any questions on item thirty? Do we have a motion, item thirty?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item thirty-one, consider and take possible action on order calling for the November sixth, two thousand eighteen school board election.
Good afternoon, members of the school board, Superintendent. We do have an election that is due on November sixth of two thousand eighteen for your consideration. We'd ask that you approve this item, we need it so that the deadlines are coming up.
Any questions on item thirty-one? Do we have a motion, item thirty-one?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item thirty-two, consider and take possible action on appointment of early voting clerk Hilda Gonzalez Garza and deputy, deputy early voting clerk, Marin Lopez, for the November sixteen, six, two thousand eighteen school board election.
As you all are aware, we're the ones that are conducting our own election, and we do need the early voting clerk and the deputy early voting clerk. So I ask that you all approve this item as well.
Do we have a discussion? Do we have a motion, item thirty-two?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything on reports? It is now seven twenty-two, we'll be heading to closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point oh seven-one. It is eight-ten, we're out of executive session. Item A, there's no action required. Item B, do we have a motion, item B?
Move to approve item B as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, do we have a motion, item C?
I move to approve item C as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, do we have a motion, item D?
I move to approve item D as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item D, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item, no action required. Do we have a motion, motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Solis, it is eight-eleven, meeting is now adjourned.